Good morning, welcome to the Thurston County Board of County Commissioners Board Work Session. It's Monday, August 12th, 2024. It's 10:03 a.m. My name is Ty Menter, Chair of the Board, Vice Chair Commissioner Wayne Fournier, Commissioner Caroline Mahia, Commissioner Gary Edwards on Zoom, Commissioner Emily Klaus here with me in the boardroom, County Manager Leonard Hernandez. And we have two hours to cover a couple of items, but first up is the Fish Passage Enhancement Program update. We have Public Works staff to lead us on that. Public Virtual attendance is available on the Thurston County YouTube channel. So, straight to Public Works, County Manager?
Yeah, I know that Matt wanted to show a video. I don't want to steal your thunder, but I'm good with that.
It's, if you don't mind it, it's a little choppy because it's a drone video and it's sort of, okay.
It'd be great, so.
So about halfway through the presentation, I don't want to give away what it is, but I think the Commissioners will and the County Manager will really like it.
For their viewing pleasure, so without any more items that I have, Matt, why don't you take it away and introduce your team?
Yeah, thank you, County Manager. Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Matt Unsmann, County Engineer. A couple of weeks ago, we did a presentation on the Transportation Improvement Program, or the TIP, and we discussed how projects arrive on it. Today, we're going to talk about the program that prioritizes fish passage projects that get included in the TIP. Public Works is extremely proud of this program, and we're pleased to be able to share some of our accomplishments today. This is an informational briefing only, and we're not seeking any direction at the end of this presentation. Doing the presenting today is Marcus Storvik, Senior Civil Engineer in our design group, and the newly promoted Elena Fernandez. She is our new Senior Environmental Coordinator.
Congratulations.
I'll turn it over.
Awesome. Good morning, as County Engineer mentioned, Marcus Storvik, Senior Civil Engineer. Also, a member of our team, Bill Richardson, he's an Associate Civil Engineer, he's not here with us today, but he's an integral part of the program as well. And we'll jump here in a second. I'll be honest, I've done a few of these presentations, and we like to keep it lively and engaging. So, we timed ourselves, we'll talk for 30 minutes, but if there's questions or clarifications throughout, please feel free to interrupt. I might not see Zoom hands or anything, but we'll definitely stop if there's ever a question. Okay. So, we figured, we'll start off with just more background information before we go into project specifics, where we've been, where we are now, and where we're headed. So, the Fish Passage Enhancement Program was created in 2017. The history with that is there was 21 tribes along with the United States that sued Washington State in 2001, AKA the culverts case, for the state not addressing their barriers that was blocking fish passage, specifically culverts. An injunction was issued against the Washington State Department of Transportation in 2013, and although cities and counties were not named in that injunction, Thurston County saw a need to proactively start addressing our own fish barriers at that time, and thus, the program was created. Since then, the program has been funded with $2 million in REIT II funds every year, and staff strives to leverage those dollars as much as possible for matching for every eligible grant opportunity we come across. The goal of this program is to replace anadromous fish barriers. Elena, we'll get to that in a second, what exactly those means, those terms mean, but those barriers within county right-of-way. And right now, we have identified over 300 county-owned barriers within our right-of-way.
Okay, so Marcus threw out a term, "anadromous", and that refers to any fish that spawns in freshwater and then migrates out to the ocean. In general, all salmon species are anadromous, and they've evolved ways to kind of stay out of each other's way, you know, as they go through their life cycles. There's just kind of a temporal, temporal evolutions and in spatial, you know, so they stay out of, you know, referring to timing, you know, with the timing of migration, spawning when the juveniles leave, and then spatially, like where each of these species spawn and where they rear. In Thurston County, we have three predominant anadromous species, koho being the main one that we see a lot in our streams. Koho, they've evolved to spawn in the late fall, mid-late fall, in the streams and side channels, kind of closer to the coast versus like the interior, and then in streams and lots of cover, so like you can, yeah, see.
There is a question, all right, yeah.
Oh, sorry, go ahead, Commissioner Fournier.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So, they lay eggs in the fall, they hatch in the spring, remain in the gravel till they use their, you know, the babies, the juveniles, you know, remain in the gravel till they use their yoke. Once the yoke is used, they emerge as fry and then migrate upstream into the little pools, smaller side channels. We've even found them in roadside ditches that retain water. Yeah, they go really far upstream. Yep, up to, I believe studies have shown, up to about four miles away from where they've hatched. Generally, they go about, about a mile, but they can go up to four miles. So, yeah, then they spend about a year or two in the spring, or sorry, a year or two in the freshwater environment, and then in the spring, they'll migrate to the, you know, to the marine environment, and then grow, that's where most of the growth happens, then they return to the streams where they hatched, and then they die. Because juvenile koho migrate far from where they've hatched and, you know, relative, you know, to their rearing areas, they can encounter a lot of our obstructions, you know, like culverts that block access to these prime nursery areas. We take that into consideration when selecting our sites and our structures. If we can design a culvert with a movement and migration of small fish in mind, then the big fish won't have a problem.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
When you said that we have 300 or over 300 county barriers, those are, so I have a couple of questions on that. So, on one question is, are those, that's not the number of total barriers, those are just ones with veteran county control, there's like state and that would be on top of that?
Exactly, and I think the state now has, and again, that's not cities, not private, the state has 3,000 identified barriers, so that 300 is just Thurston County barriers.
But in our total or in our county?
Uh, in our county.
They have 3,000?
3,000 across the state, sorry, yes.
And then, I know that when I was, when I first joined the board and I was hearing about this, there was like discussion about how, like when the state was moving forward with a program, there was discussion in committees about like, well, most of the counties and cities haven't inventoried there. So, it's like, it felt like, well, the state's going to be looking at like its map, but it could be directly, you know, like, this one could look like really important, but they don't actually realize that right behind it is a, is a county one. And so, the, so whatever the state's investing is not going to have zero benefit because nobody's integrating a comprehensive inventory. And then, then I know there was a pilot grant that, I think Thurston and one other county got a grant to basically, to sort of, to solve that problem at a, you know, at a pilot level in the sort of inventory. So, I'm just wondering if, when you say, I haven't heard much about that lately, or if it got finished or whatever, so I'm wondering, I mean, I'm wondering when you say there's 300 in Thurston, is, do we know that because of that grant? And there's other counties that don't know that at all? Or has everyone kind of tried to inventory these things, like, so that the state can make the right decisions and work with the locals?
No, absolutely. So, my, my understanding is most counties are aware of that inventory. And actually, we, we build all of our data, starting with the Fish and Wildlife Database. And so, I believe they were the primary grant recipients for that study. So, we've, we've actually worked with Thur staff that, hey, if you've identified this as a partial, partial barrier or an unknown barrier, we'll reach out, they have staff that will go out and help us inventory that. As I said, most counties, I think, do use that. I knew a few, like King County, they have their own database, they do their own inventory, but we definitely rely on the Fish and Wildlife Database, which had that, I believe, the grant for that.
So, when the state is doing things that they're doing, are they, does that run out of WashDOT? Or like who's, who's leading the state's effort to identify culverts, like the way Public Works does for us? As far as like the project, at the project level, it's the Washington State Department of Transportation. Now, who prioritizes the severity of the fish blockages? That's Fish and Wildlife.
All right, sorry, thank you.
No, good question.
So, now shifting, we, we know, we now kind of understand what this, what these anadromous, what anadromous means, but then, and how it relates to our culverts. But now, we throw out this other word called, you know, for barriers, what, what is the fish barriers? So, there's a beautiful article in the Seattle Times with a great set of illustrations that kind of talks about some of these obstructions that the juvenile fish can encounter. The first one is a velocity, a velocity barrier. You know, think like a fire hose, you know, the flow is neck down from the stream through this very small, undersized structure, and the velocity increases of that flow, and that kind of creates a chute. This fast-flowing water can lead to bed-and-bank scour, which can destroy the salmon nests, and it can increase erosion, add sediment to the stream, and undermine downstream structures. The next barrier type is a depth barrier. So, the water isn't deep enough in the culvert. It could be the culvert wasn't installed at the proper level, or it wasn't backfilled with stream sediment to bring it to the stream level. Because there isn't enough water, fish can't go upstream. There's a slope barrier. Think of it like trying to climb up a playground slide, you know, it's, it's kind of hard. The gradient basically in the culvert is too, too steep for the fish to go upstream. They can't swim up the steep grades very well. And finally, we have the perched culverts. Fish are athletic, however, they can only jump so high. And some are better, some species are better jumper, jumpers than others. The culverts were basically just installed too high above the stream, so the fish can't reach them.
So, on this illustration credit, it says, and this is the article I assume you were referencing?
Yes.
And it says, you know, "Removing Washington Salmon Barrier Surges to $1 Million a Day, But Results Are Murky." Can you, I mean, can you speak to what, what they were, what the point was there? Like what, what was murky about results?
Yeah, if I may, actually, you made a point earlier about that comprehensive look at the watershed. Right now, the DOT is so focused on the culverts that were identified in the junction case, so they have to replace that specific set by 2030. Well, sometimes, some of those culverts, you know, the state owns a culvert on I-5, and then the next upstream barrier, sometimes only 200 yards away. So, from my recollection, when I read that, I think there was a lot of questions about, can that money be spent differently? Well, they can't, because, you know, those are the culverts identifying the junction. So, they only get, yeah, they only get a certain amount of habitat gain because of the next upstream barrier.
Okay, so it's not about the technology of like being able to create fish passages, it's about the, just getting them all?
Exactly.
Fixed in, in a way that's logical?
Yep, and like, like you said earlier, most of the time, that's not a state-owned culvert. It might be a county, it might be a city.
All right, thanks.
Or privately owned.
Yeah, or private, yes, there's a lot of private.
So, I'll go ahead and defer to Marcus to talk about the, kind of our project selection, project selection process.
And going on that same article, there was also a lot of discussion about how the state prioritizes those culverts selected or identified in the junction. And I think it was really encouraging for our program to read through a lot of those priorities and factors that the DOT incorporates, our program also incorporates. So, it's, it's good to know that we're kind of working along with our regional partners. I briefly mentioned this at the last presentation during the CIP discussion last month about how our program identifies our projects and updates our inventory. And like we said last month, it, the program is a pipeline for creating projects. So, the first step that we do is that we already have an existing database. However, every few years, we'll go through and update that inventory of culverts based on whether we have new culverts that we installed or replaced. It's, it's nice to see that the culverts that were identified as barriers before now aren't when we go ahead and replace them, so that updates the inventory. And then the second step after that is then to find and identify any new culverts that have been newly identified as barriers, whether they change in barrier status. Elena mentioned the different barrier types. Well, you can have a partial velocity barrier, 33% passable, or a total. So, any change in barrier status, we want to make sure we catch. Step three is, once all that data has been updated, we'll go ahead and reshuffle that list and assign scoring criteria to each barrier. So, different factors we take into account is anadromous fish access. So, we're most concerned about, like Elena said, the fish that actually make it out to the scene back. The miles of habitat gain, barrier status, again, if it's a total, a partial barrier, condition of the culvert, if it's a need to repair, the maintenance history, regional significance. We'll go ahead and, and talk with our tribal partners and other advocacy groups in the area that have priority lists to see if there's any overlap, and then overlap within our own Public Works programs. If there's a known road project or a maintenance issue in that area, that will then garner more points because it has more of a need across department. With that list, then, we'll, we're able to identify the top-scoring barriers, which are deemed reasonable and feasible to construct within our budget, and we'll go ahead and select those sites for an alternative analysis to determine what the preferred alternative is for replacement. At the conclusion of that study, we'll then recommend the number of fish barriers that can be corrected, again, with the program budget, that will maximize the amount of habitat gained by construction. And this entire process is repeated every about two to three years. Again, similar to what I shared last month, these are some running totals for the program since inception in 2017. Through the program, we've constructed 13 separate projects. That's accounts, that accounts for 24 culverts that have been replaced with fish-passable structures. Those are either usually a bridge or another larger culvert. This leads to 17 miles of habitat open, averaging a cost of about $1 million, less than $1 million per mile. We've also been very successful in attaining $9.5 million in grant funding, again, going back, trying to leverage REIT wherever possible, and it just accounts for about 68 cents of additional external funding for every dollar of REIT spent. So, now we'll go ahead and get into some project-specific information. This is a county-wide map with those 13 projects constructed to date, plus another four that are either currently in construction or about to be in construction soon. The circles represent the 13 already completed. Different colors mean different years, and then same for the triangles, the triangles of the four ones to be constructed. So, today, we'll go highlight, highlight only two of the ones completed to date, starting with the lower right corner of the county, light blue circle. And this is our Pisner Road Southeast at Elbow Lake Creek Project, project number 63014. For location, this is about a half-mile upstream of the Squawley River. That definitely has very good anadromous fish, fish access, so it ranked high in our program for replacement. This was constructed in the summer of 2020 by Rook Dar to Construction of Auburn. And prior to construction, it was a three-foot diameter velocity barrier. That was 33% passable, and we went ahead and replaced it with a 30, 60-foot prefabricated steel cutter bridge. We selected this one, in the year of COVID, there was a lot of things happening across the county, so this one maybe didn't get as, as highlighted as much as before. But it was, it was a great project that we were very successful in reopening the channel. On this slide, you can see the before picture on the left. The dark circle there is the three-foot diameter culvert, and on the right is the 60-foot bridge. It's kind of hard to imagine this is exactly the same perspective before and after, but we see this a lot in our projects, that just the drastic difference that these, these fish passage barrier projects can make in the ecosystem here.
I can't really, I can't really understand the before picture.
Sure, so.
What am I looking at?
So, right here is that three-foot diameter culvert.
Oh, yeah. Okay, yeah.
It's not even, yeah, highlighted.
Okay, gotcha. And then what is, was that, that's just like, that was just a road on top of it?
Correct, so road right about, yep.
You guys can't see it, but now, now I can.
Yeah. A total project cost was just under $900,000 for this project, and we did receive a great feedback from actually residents living along Pisner Road itself that we were very successful with, so very, very happy with this one. And I'll go ahead and pass it to Elena for our other completed project.
Can I ask something like this? I mean, I know that dollars are limited, and we're always trying to, you know, stretch our transportation dollars and all of that, but like, are we in a place where we don't build, you know, like where we're maybe investing a little more to like put the bridge in first versus trying, or, you know, I mean, like, what's that balance between like, when would we still build something like on the left? That would be, that you can almost say, okay, in 30 years, this is going to have to be replaced because it's going to get all gummed up, or it's going to, it's not going to be, like, are we, are we trying to, you know, think about this a little, has this, what we're, what we're having to do now, is this factoring into your future planning? You know, thinking more about salmon and fish passage out in front when the project gets built originally? Or is there just not enough dollars to do that? I don't, I'm just so, you understand me? The short answer to that, I think, is that on all of our culvert projects or bridge projects, we have to meet WashDOT's stream flow guidelines.
Yeah, W, yeah, WDFW, we have to seek permits, and in order to meet those permit requirements, we need to meet certain bank full width, you know, we have to be so many feet outside the bank full width. It's accounting for climate change, there's so much space under the bridge or under the structure to allow floodwaters to go through.
Yeah, so.
Yeah.
So, now, we're not just designing for fish passage, we're also designing for climate mitigation too. So, have those standards changed since like that thing was built? Yes, and that's, that's why 30 years ago, you didn't have those requirements. So, you could put it, it was, that was probably a cheap option to, to go with back 30 years ago. But now, we're looking at it from a different perspective, and like, what's best for the, for the local environment?
And it is factored into the, the planning, so now, I mean, very rarely are we able, have a need to build a brand-new road, so a lot of our projects are, you know, expanding retrofit capacity issues. So, when we know we're crossing a fish barrier creek, we will factor in those additional costs associated with the larger structure.
All right, so shifting gears to the Deschutes watershed now. This project, located on Latigo Street Southeast and at the Chehalis Western Trail, replaced a complex of four culverts. So, two are underneath the roadway, and two are underneath the trail itself. To remove these barriers, we had to get creative to make sure pedestrian users could still use the trail and residents could access their homes. In addition, we needed to make sure water would stay flowing during construction, so this, we didn't risk the stream drying up. And this is all without going over budget. In the first picture on the left, that's kind of a before picture. You can see where the outlet of the two culverts, which is kind of at the bottom of the screen, those are under the roadway, and then we have that man-made pond kind of in the middle, where Marcus is circling. That was initially used for flood control, but it's been enlarged by scour from these two culverts. And then there's the two culverts underneath the Chehalis Western Trail. If you notice, those two culverts were actually, not only are they like undersized, they're really tiny, but they are actually set a little higher than the culverts underneath the roadway. So, they're also a little perched, and that created some of that backwater within that little man-made pond. The site had some issues with some active beavers, water topping over the roadway during flood events, and so, these factors, you know, kind of all contributed to that problem, like how do we keep water flowing during construction? So, the solution was to make two long culverts kind of shown in that middle picture, and then bury them to create a working platform to, you know, for equipment to use, and then also to divert traffic onto, you know, like, like in the last picture, you can see where there's an excavator where those culverts were, where they're tied in. So, that gave us a larger surface to work from throughout construction. It made sure we were able to keep traffic flowing and that hydraulic connection, so we didn't dry up upstream and downstream.
So, that middle picture was just, just during construction?
Yes.
And on the left, how long were, were those culverts, just across the road?
Yep, just across the road, and then the two underneath the trail were just across the trail. Yep. So, there are a couple of other unique aspects to this project, including the placement of large woody material. If you've been to the site, you've noticed there's a lot of wood in the stream, and some of these pieces are really large, up to about 30 inches in diameter. If Marcus could play the video, you can see one of these pieces that were being installed. So, the contractor actually sharpened the end, and then they just used the excavator to push it into the stream bed. These pieces serve hydraulic purposes, so they provide scour protection for the bridges, and they also provide wetland water retention kind of on the upstream side. They also enhance stream habitat by providing juvenile salmon and resident fish places to hide from predators, and also places where they can hunt for prey. They also create cool, deep pools for resident fish and migrating adults to rest, kind of seek that thermal refuge during kind of warmer temperatures as well. The second video is the placement of one of our prefabricated bridges. The second video is the placement of one of our prefabricated bridges on the Chehalis Western Trail. These bridges are just integral to the excess of our program, to the success of our program. As they're manufactured offsite and then delivered to public works facilities where they remain until we need them during construction. They come on a flatbed truck and they're assembled like IKEA furniture or Lego, obviously on a much larger scale. They're lifted into place with a crane bolted to the abutments and then the section that this crane is lifting here is about ninety feet long. So they can be quite large. And again, we did all this work while maintaining that stream flow. The culverts that you see in both of those videos, kind of at the bottom of the screen, those are actually carrying the stream. So we were able to maintain that stream flow throughout construction.
If you ever need help, I'm good at IKEA furniture.
You are? Sweet, okay.
We love to have you out loud experience.
To give scale to the site, we have a drone footage here of kind of some before conditions. The white lines are the culverts as they, as they laid under the road and under the trail. And we have our water flow following the orange arrows from the bottom of the screen towards the top. And yeah, so that's, we have that wetland complex at the bottom of the screen that we were trying to, that we were wanting to retain. And now for the big reveal. Drumroll. So this drone photo, this drone photo was taken shortly after construction. You can see the two bridges where the four culverts used to be. The channel is wider, especially between the two bridges. And all that fill material, which, yeah, a whopping thirty two hundred cubic yards or three hundred and twenty dump trucks full is, is now gone. The wetland was retained, again, at the bottom of the screen. Localized habitat was enhanced with the, you know, in the riparian zone was enhanced with the plant, with native plantings. And motorized, non-motorized access was maintained, as I said, throughout construction. We restored fish access to over a mile of, of stream habitat and also access to one hundred acres of wetland habitat. That was all restored. Wildlife continued to grace the site, so we've had songbirds, kingfisher, some hawks, river otter, beaver, ducks, deer. It's a very productive site, so it's not just fish that benefit, it's wildlife as well. And these projects can serve as wildlife corridors, kind of the shallow banks under the bridges and sufficient clearance under these structures allow terrestrial animals to safely cross our roads, gives them another way to do so. So, so we've done all that for one point nine million dollars. One point six came from a grant from the Bryan Abbott Fish Barrier Removal Board and the rest were REIT two investment.
Can you go back a slide? Because, I mean, like that wetland, yeah, okay, so I'm trying to compare the wetland complex above. Or actually, it's going this way, so I should say below, okay.
Yeah, so the wetland.
You were saying below and I was looking down on the picture, but that's actually above.
Yeah, you are upstream, yes, correct, yes.
So I'm backward, because I was like, wow, that's, on the next slide, you see this huge thing that you can't really see as good in this picture, but.
And they could be taken at slightly different times of the year.
Yeah, a lot less trees.
Yeah, and there's a lot less trees in this after photo.
Yeah, you can see the channel.
We held the ribbon cutting for this project in November of twenty two. We had our, the RCO Director, Megan Duffy, join Commissioners Edwards and Mahia to cut the ribbon. And again, just a couple, a couple of quick stats, we had thirty two hundred cubic yards of fill removed, so three hundred and twenty dump trucks. And yeah, that's about a mile and a half of dump trucks kind of lined up bumper to bumper. We restored, yeah, one point one miles of habitat, or access to one point one miles of habitat and about a hundred acres of upstream wetland habitat. Yep, and for under two, under two million dollars. We did submit this project for the APWA Washington State Chapter Project of the Year, but sadly we lost to Snohomish County to their little Bear Creek Advanced Mitigation Site Project, so. But that's, and that saved them thirty million dollars for eleven transportation projects and wetland mitigation, so. It's okay.
We'll get the next one.
We'll get the next one.
So going back to our project map now, we've talked about history to date, now we'll talk about present, what we're doing right now. Projects under construction are going to construction soon. So we're highlighting four different projects there, you can see two in twenty twenty five and then one in twenty twenty four and one in twenty twenty six. And again, most of these, you've probably already heard the CIP presentation last month. For example, the, the first one, Country Club Road at Green Cove Creek, project number six, three, oh, two, three. So there on the left, I'm sure you've seen this photo many times now, but the gentleman standing down looking above is actually right next to a three foot dammer velocity barrier and will be coming in sometime next year now, replacing it with a hundred fifty foot long post tensioned concrete bridge. Quig Brothers contract in July and they actually already started construction a few weeks ago. There's a road closure already in place and we're estimating the completion to be September of twenty twenty five. This project is estimated cost nine point six million dollars. And there are a grand total of eight different funding sources. Six million of those funding sources are from grants, whether they are federal grants or state grants. So staff was very successful in trying to leverage county dollars as much as possible to get this very important project done. And at this time, I'll try to actually show the vote video, so see where it goes. This was a drone shot just taken last Wednesday of, of the site itself, so I don't know if anybody's been able to go out since we started. But only in a few weeks, our contractor has been able to make a lot of progress. And the video is a little choppy, but what we're doing is we're starting downstream. And what you first saw was the temporary water line for residents. The temporary water was rerouted downstream across the creek there. And there are excavators that are already benching the dirt excavation out one at a time. So the bottom one will lift dirt up, place it the next one, who then will list it to a third one to haul it away. So that's that fifty feet of scale that they're working on. The timeline for removal for the actual culvert is the middle of September, so it's already, you know, six weeks away from there. But looking like we're gonna hit that, that mark, our contractor's been very good to work with and very responsive to, to the needs of the project. So very exciting to, to see this one come together.
So when you say September, that's when they're actually get all that dirt out of there and the culvert will actually, they'll, they'll be down all the way to the culvert, is that what you're saying?
That, that is correct, yep, about six weeks. So there'll be one really big hole right there. The second project that is already under construction, or at least not started construction, but the contract's been awarded as of last Tuesday to Masana, this is our Thompson Creek Road Southeast at Thompson Creek Project, six, three, oh, two, five. This project will replace the ten foot diameter metal pipe there on the left from, from the upstream side and looking at the inlet of the culvert with a seventy foot long prefabricated steel bridge. So again, going back to Elena says that these prefabricated bridges are a great success to why the program's been, been able to do what it can do. And that bridge is already sitting in our Tilly Yard Campus. Now, just for going back to where we talked about the different barrier types, I mean, that, that ten foot culvert, that's a fairly large culvert to begin with. What you can kind of, well, it's hidden by some of the vegetation on the right. That outlet, right where the water flows out, has a lot of large riprap gabion baskets. There is a lot of evidence here at the site that this has extreme velocity events. So although that ten foot culvert is already fairly big compared to what we see, still identified as a barrier due to those high velocity events. And so that's why that seventy foot bridge is necessary to allow fish passage.
The water actually over tops the road at this location because the culvert can't keep up.
Yeah, it's actually, I, I myself tried to go out there January twenty twenty two during the storm event, but the road was closed, it was over flooded, so. I did not get a good photo to show, but yes, it has been over topped before. Estimated project cost for this is two point three million. We do have five hundred thousand dollars in a grant from Bryan Abbott and another eighty thousand dollars from the Salmon Recovery Funding Board. And the really awesome part about this project is we're estimating over ten miles of habitat to be gained once the bridge is in place. This is by far the largest amount of habitat gained from a single project, so.
The one that's way down at the Lewis County border?
It's a thousand feet from the county border, yes.
And there's nothing, and I mean, like, the, the ten foot culvert can't be made functional, like even if you took out riprap and put in more woody debris and tried to deal with the velocity issue, it's still gonna be inadequate, is what you're seeing?
That is correct, yep. And to put it into more context, this photo doesn't show it on the left. The bank full width measurement, that's just a measurement of how far the water's edge goes during a two-year storm. It has a fifty percent chance of happening every year. That's about twenty to twenty-five feet at the site, so even that can't even fit through the ten foot dammer culvert, so.
So just because it's a ten, you know, it's a, it's a big culvert, it's too small for the stream.
It's just a big stream, that's a big must be.
It's a big stream.
Really big stream because ten foot culverts work other places, right?
Absolutely, yeah. And this one, Thompson Creek, is a tributary to the Scoopin Chuck, so one of the more, larger water bodies we have. The third project going to construction soon is our Shaun Drive Southwest at Dempsey Creek Tributary. This is a road off Delphi Road, it is a, Dempsey Creek is then, it's a tributary itself to Black River, so in the Black River watershed. What you're looking at on the left is a metal pipe that measures three foot in diameter. This is thirty three percent passable and we plan to replace this culvert with a thirty three foot long prefabricated steel bridge. This project, Elena was successful in actually getting a photo, a, a video of this and that's the outlet showing the amount of water that can come out of this culvert. This is definitely a velocity barrier. Right as the video pans on the right, you can see how the water's making that sharp turn. We have a lot of evidence of erosion occurring right at that, it's very close to a private driveway at, at that corner. So there, there is a lot of evidence to support this being a barrier. Try to imagine a juvenile trying to swim up through that, that velocity. It's not gonna happen. The board recently approved a call for shield bids to manufacture deliver that prefabricated bridge. So we'll go ahead and, and order that and its delivery will come sometime early twenty twenty five with construction happening in the summer of twenty twenty five. Estimated project cost is one point nine million. We already secured fifty thousand dollars in a Salmon Recovery Funding Board Grant. And we are waiting to hear back on another grant application. This one totals nine hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars from the Department of Ecology's Stream Flow Program. Once the bridge is installed, there'll be point seven miles of habitat open from this. Last project to highlight that will be upcoming, this is Sixty First Avenue at Fry Cove Tributary. This is just west of our county park, Fry Cove County Park. And what is on the left, one of our surveyors is standing on top of it, is a six foot diameter metal culvert. It's thirty three percent passable due to slope, so it's just too steep at the certain conditions for fish to get upstream. The preferred alternative is a fifteen foot wide box culvert. And this is a great example to highlight, like, like we talked about earlier with the process. This is a stage where this is already have an alternative analysis study performed and it's been selected to progress towards design and eventual construction. And so at this state, we're through design, just trying to find additional funding again to leverage REIT as much as possible.
What's the current size of the culvert?
Six foot.
So it's gonna go six to fifteen?
Exactly, yep. And again, usually six foot is a fairly large diameter culvert. The slope doesn't help us there, the steeper the pipe goes, the more velocity that we have. So we have to provide that fifteen foot wide opening for, for some of those reasons.
Is that gonna be like a flatter slope too, or is it just the bigger space allows them to?
Bigger space, the slope we have to, we have to go upstream and downstream, maybe a hundred feet each way to try to correct the slope. But, you know, this will be steeper than Thompson Creek still, just because of the topography. Total project cost is estimated at two and a half million and we are waiting to hear back from a grant application for Bryan Abbott for one point nine million. So if we are successful with that, the remaining six hundred thousand dollars will come from REIT allocated for the program. This project would open up about a half mile habitat gain and part of that is an eight acre wetland complex just upstream that has a lot of high quality rearing area for, for anadromous fish. So with that, I'll pass it one more time back to Elena, we've talked about the history and where we've been and where we are now and she'll close it out with where we're going.
Yep, so we can, yep, we've talked about, as Marcus said, where the project started, what we've done, what we're doing. And now we're gonna look to the future. This is where that cycle starts all over again with this, you know, with focus on steps four and five. We have a list of projects that we are planning to complete studies for. This doesn't guarantee construction, think of this as like fact finding to help inform our project planning, determining project feasibility and also allow us to pursue grant, you know, give us the information to pursue grant funding. And this is not an exhaustive list or the final list, but these are some studies that we are planning on, on pursuing. So first, we're gonna complete that alternatives analysis for the Thirty Sixth and Kaiser Road culverts as part of the second phase of the Green Cove Creek watershed culvert, culvert replacement projects. We did receive a five hundred thousand dollar allocation, federal funds from the Culvert AOP Program for the completion of these alternatives analyses. We are also going to explore the final permanent structure for the Kellogg Drive culvert after completing a temporary fix this fall. Additional sites, you know, obviously will be added as we identify program metrics at the respect, you know, at the, the respective sites meet. I do also want to mention the Rainier Road and the Spurgeon Creek Road Southeast culverts are also under consideration. These are the last two culvert, the most upstream culvert sets on Spurgeon Creek. There's been a, you know, starting with our Latigo Street Southeast and our Chehalis Western Trail, you know, project. There's a plan for a private culvert to be addressed, I believe they're going to construction this summer. But it is in, in the works. And then these last two county-owned culverts are the last, they're, they're last pieces for this watershed. So we definitely wanna see if we can close that out. But yeah, you know, we'll add more sites, we'll kind of just assess all the different parameters within our, within our matrix and augment this list as the needs arise. So these projects don't just benefit, benefit fish or wildlife or have the, you know, or the ecological benefits. There's also economic benefits too. And the funds spent on these projects create jobs, they increase spending in area businesses close to the project site. You know, for, for every two, or yeah, there's two dollars and fifty cents in economic activity that's generated from every dollar spent there. Most importantly, the majority of benefits remain in the local community. And these benefits are especially important to areas with high unemployment or areas where there are not a lot of, of jobs readily available. And they also contribute, you know, these, replacing these barriers with fish passable structures also contributes to obviously statewide salmon recovery. And as we know, Washington State does have a rich history of commercial fishing, sport fishing generating over five hundred and forty thousand dollars, or sorry, five hundred and forty million dollars in personal income creating sixteen thousand jobs. So keeping this going benefits everyone. A large portion of our program is also our education and outreach. With everything that we've done, we love to talk about it and we love to share what we've learned and how we've contributed to salmon recovery within the county and within Washington State. So we do this in several ways. If you've driven around the county, you've probably seen some of these signs. They were completed in-house and, you know, with our own sign crews and we post these on all of our sites to label the program and to market the program and to show constituents their, you know, their investment and their, their contribution to salmon recovery in replacing these barriers. We're currently revamping that program webpage with our communications group to share information about our program with a broader audience. about our program with a broader audience. And we readily share information with our sister public work agen, works agencies such as King County, Pierce County, Mason County. And we also share information and work with local advocacy, advocacy groups such as the RIALEED entities, Chehalis Basin Partnership. And, you know, so we help each other troubleshoot, we help each other find solutions and explore overlapping opportunities to strengthen the value of our respective agency's projects to add to that watershed approach and to, yeah, just help each other get through some of the process sometimes. One of the most common outreach activities are kind of site tours and speaking events. We've been invited to present our program to different volunteer agencies such as Rotary International and we conduct several site visits a year. Most recently, we've hosted the Recreation and Conservation Office, the Office of Financial Management and representatives from State House and Senate Committees to show how we've leveraged grant funding to successfully construct the Latigo Street Southeast Chehalis Western Trail project at Spurgeon Creek. We also hosted the Bryan Abbott Fish Barrier Removal Board and the member agencies, NGOs, sister public work agencies, local government, state agencies and citizens on, you know, with visits just like this. And we've also presented at conference, conferences such as the April 23 Salmon Recovery Conference in Vancouver, Washington. And we're not the only ones who think this program is really doing great things. In 2018, this program received Project of the Year awards for environmental projects less than $5 million from the APWA Washington Chapter and the National Organization. The International Conference on Ecology and Transportation also awarded this program the stewardship award in 2019 during their international meeting in Sacramento, California. So we're definitely kind of at the forefront of this fish passage, of these actions, basically. And then just to recap our program statistics, again, we have 13 projects, we've replaced 24 barrier culverts with fish passable structures, opening 17 miles of habitat. This time next year, it'll actually be 28 miles of habitat opened. Yep, with the completion of Green Cove, Thompson Creek and our Shaun Drive projects. The average cost, it's less than a million dollars a mile, so 68 cents. And, you know, we've been able to leverage that with grant money, 68 cents of grant funds for every dollar that we provide, or that we spend. And yeah, $9.5 million of grant funds awarded, so we definitely try to leverage the opportunities that we have available.
Great statistics.
We're proud of them for sure. And at this point, if you have any questions, please let us know. We have our contact information and after this talk, if, you know, you come up with other questions, please feel free to call us, email us, we love talking about the program.
Absolutely. Thank you for giving us the chance.
I have a question. When are you going to hear back on that $1.9 million grant for the 61st Ave and Fry Cove?
For Bryan Abbott, that's September, October.
So the Bryan Abbott Fish Barrier Removal Board, it's a biennial, biennial program. So we'll get the, we'll call it the preliminary list, it should be this fall, but of course, nothing's official until the legislature approves the next biennial budget.
Okay, awesome, thank you.
You're welcome.
Can we try Edwards?
Well, I just think it was a super presentation and I'm glad there's other folks around paying attention to it. This'd be something maybe good to present to the Economic Development Council. Wayne's on there and I, I just think it's super. And the more we can get this out to let people know how we're doing some good things with tax dollars once in a while, so. Attaboy to all of your whole outfit, super.
I, I would agree and if, if you want to help setting that up, Matt and I could help with that. This is something that you're proud of. I completely agree, Commissioner Edwards, this is awesome work.
Thank you.
I agree as well. I thought it was a very well-rounded presentation and I really liked, enjoyed the conversation as well that was created around this and really highlighting this piece and all the great work that you all have done, I think is very important to share in the community.
Well, thank you.
All right, thank you guys so much.
You're welcome, thank you.
Appreciate all of it.
If you have any other questions, please feel free to let us know.
You will.
Thank you.
So if I go out to Country Club right now, I can see, I mean, you said the road's closed, like how close can I guess what I'm, like what can I see from where at Vantage Point?
I, I would say as long as you got PPE, our inspector will take you as close as you want to, but it, it's closed right out the Country Club loop, um, part of it, so right out there, you won't be able to see much, you'd have to walk down through some equipment, but we, we have project inspectors, staff, if you are curious.
Yep, absolutely, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, only other item this morning is commissioner items and we have, do have commissioners check in scheduled at two. Is there a burning issue to be addressed this morning? Looking at my seatmates, hearing nothing. Commanding manager, anything?
No.
At this time, we'll be adjourned for now, we'll see everybody back at two.
Wonderful, thank you.